Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the Baltimore City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson for the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear the following bill, 23-0380 Charter Amendment for the Community Reinvestment Reparations Fund. Here to my left, I have President Nick Mosby of the Baltimore City Council, members of the committee, John Bullock of the Ninth District, Ryan Dorsey of the Third District, Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District, Mark Conway of the Fourth District, and Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District. And representing the Council President's Office, we have Erin DeGraffan-Reed, our General Counsel, and Tiffany Macklin, Deputy Director of Legislation, behind us. And Nathan Poole, Fiscal and Legislative Analyst. Nathan, I forgot your name, I admit, I'm sorry. And Representative of the Mayor's Office, Nina Themulus, Interim Director for Government Relations. And we will begin. Bill number 23-0380 Charter Amendment, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Fund, for the purpose of establishing a continuing non-lapsing Community Reinvestment and Reparations Fund to be used exclusively to support the work of the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, authorizing the mayor and city council by ordinance to provide for the oversight, governance, and administration of this fund, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. This bill was introduced on May 1st, 2023, my birthday. This bill was sponsored by Council President Mosby. Council President, would you like to start off with some comments?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. First and foremost, thank you to this committee and to the full body for passing out the original bill, the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, as well as identifying folks in the community to serve on the commission. The point of this bill is pretty simple. It just creates a lockbox of funds that would come in from a community reinvestment and reparations perspective to ensure that, one, the commission is ultimately kind of the fiduciary role and responsibility of ensuring that those funds go to an intended target, as well as keeping an easy accounting of the amount of money that is coming in from a reinvestment reparations perspective and going out to either grassroots, grass tops, or other organizations that are doing the amazing work in the community, or folks that will benefit ultimately from these funds. So again, thank you to this committee for hearing the adjoining bill to this regarding the actual commission. Now, we're talking about the actual lockbox fund to ensure that we can keep track, accurate track of dollars coming in and out, and ensure that they go to the intended target that the reparations and reinvestment fund was set up to do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any other committee members that want to make any comments before we move to our agency representatives? And hearing none, so we have three agencies to hear from, the City Solicitor's Office, Department of Finance, and the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. And we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Elena DePietro from the City Law Department. The Law Department has reviewed this bill. And to get out of the way of the housekeeping matter, there seemed to be some sort of typographical or drafting error on the first page in lines 18 through 20, which refer to definitions, and there are no definitions following it. So we recommend that those lines 18 through 20 be removed from the bill. The more substantive issue with the bill involves the scope of the use of the funds. The wording of the bill suggests a broader possible use than is allowed by the state law. So the Law Department recommends that the bill be amended to just more mimic the uses that are allowed under the state law. And the wording is in the bill. And I also have asked Legislative Reference to prepare amendments as well for those two matters. And our only other issue with the bill is that perhaps you might want to consider that it really isn't necessary to have a charter, to have a chartered, created fund for this program, because the money is already earmarked by state law for the purposes of the state law, which is the only thing it can be used for. So when the money comes into the city, it's immediately put in a separate fund that establishes it for that purpose. And then the fund is drawn upon by the agency that's administering the fund and used for those purposes. So if you, there are good pros and cons to charter amendments. They can safekeep things, but they can also make it difficult to change things should you want to do so in the future if the program evolves.
Okay. Comments? We'll start with Council President.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Pietro, for always doing an amazing job of following up with the council and partnering with the council from a legal, least perspective. The first amendment, and thank you for sending it over yesterday, but the first amendment, definitely understand, so truly appreciate you guys cleaning those lines up. The second regarding the state law, the intention of the commission, as well as ultimately this fund, is that there will be other opportunities in state law outside of cannabis that would be specific to reinvestment or reparations. And the commission that was established by this council was established to be in position to do that, not just specific to the state law. So I think that that's really important to council members of understanding and knowing the point of the commission. You know, obviously, you know, there could come times where there's federal money, there's other state money, or even money identified from a city perspective that should go towards reinvestment or reparations germane to kind of the point and the foundation of the original funds, but more importantly, the creation of a commission. And that's what the commission is there to do, to take on those funds. And then lastly, kind of the lockbox, expect, the lockbox perspective and a non-lapsing funds perspective is in the same light. The intention is that there will be other monies moving forward from a reparations or reinvestment perspective that could ultimately wind up in this fund as well. And it's important for it to be non-lapsing. It's important for it to be separated. And that's why ultimately the posture of this bill was putting it as a charter amendment.
Any other questions or comments to the City Solicitor's Office? Seeing none, let's hear from the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Committee Members. Laura Larson, Budget Director for the Department of Finance. In our position, the department is opposed to the legislation, I think, to many of the points flagged by my colleague from the City Solicitor's Office. You know, we would, we just advise that, you know, this could potentially create more restrictions or tie the hands of the council and the mayor and the city overall as you work to deploy these funds. To the point that Assistant Solicitor DePietro mentioned, under state law, these funds will already have to be segregated and to ensure that they are only being allocated for their intended purpose. And so that protection exists inherently. And so I think by sort of introducing the charter requirements, you may be sort of precluding yourself from, you know, potential future flexibilities that you want to pursue with the fund. I think we would also just advise that, you know, with funding sources like this, in order to sort of maximize their impact in the community, I think it's important that those decisions about how the funds get deployed are made in the context of the overall budget. So we can really look at how other funding sources that are going to these different types of programs or projects are being leveraged with the state funds in order to maximize the impact in the community.
Thank you. Any questions in the Department of Finance department? And I do see someone sent the message. He actually, I am taking public testimony and bringing to your question.
Thank you. Question for the sponsor. And maybe I, maybe this was addressed and I didn't hear it. On page two of the bill, under authorization, section, Article 1, Section 20, subsection B, authorization, it says, "By ordinance, the mayor and city council of Baltimore may establish." It's my understanding that the purpose of this mayor and city council resolution is itself to establish the fund by referendum. Is that not correct?
No, that's correct. This section is intended to give us the authority to actually set up the fund, to put it as a referendum to the voters. So it's basically saying, by ordinance, which we're doing here, we're going to pass this ordinance that the mayor and city council may establish this continuing non-lapsing fund for the purpose of, to ultimately put in front of the voters to vote on.
If, if I may, do you mind if I ask the Law Department about this?
Sure.
Elena, is this the normal language for the creation of a fund through a mayor and city council resolution like this?
It's a little bit convoluted, but I think it accomplishes the same purpose. It almost says in a way that the only way you can spend this money is if you do, if you establish the fund, either by a separate ordinance, as well as having this in the charter.
It's just, thank you. It's just, Mr. President, my recollection is that other mayor and city council resolutions of this sort are just worded that they would say that it puts the question to the voters that by referendum, the fund be created. And it seems to me like this is saying that we would put the question to the voters to then allow us to come back after they vote, and then us pass an ordinance to create the fund. This seems to me different than the structure of similar bills.
So you're basically saying the wording creates by, it's almost enabling, but there would be some secondary action that would be needed?
It reads to me like we're asking the voters if we can then later come back and pass an ordinance, instead of asking the voters to approve directly the creation of the fund, which I believe is your intent.
I mean, we can definitely look into that. I'm pretty sure that this was consistent with maybe another fund. But we can talk with Legislative Reference to see if there's cleaner language. But I'm pretty sure that they kind of picked this from an existing fund.
All right, if it's not, I don't know, if it's not the intent to vote this out today, then...
I mean, I think, whether it was or not, I think that's a great point.
Okay.
We want this to be stronger than just enabling, so we don't have to come back a third time.
I agree.
So if that is the case, we'll just clear that up with Legislative Reference.
Great, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm okay with coming back. If it's up to you, totally, it's up to you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I just wanted to point out too that this charter amendment closely follows the state legislation that authorizes the fund, or authorizes the state fund that is dispersed to the local governments. So if you wanted to put money in there from other funds that are created down the road, it wouldn't match up with the requirements, because they're going to have different requirements for those funds than what is in this bill, since this is so specific to the state enabling legislation. So I just wanted to point that out.
So when you say specific to that, where do you see that in the bill?
Well, the bill itself just says, "The fund is created for the purpose of, you know, taking in the funds from the State Reinvestment and Repair Act." And so, and the requirements that go along with that are the, you know, limitations on the uses of the fund. So if you wanted to put different monies in there, it would almost be like, they would be coming from a different source, but subject to the requirements of the Reinvestment and Repair Act.
Mr. Pietro, could you point to the line that you're referring to?
I'm not referring to a line specifically. I'm just referring to, well, I could give you a specific line.
Yeah, I guess, I'm saying specific to what we're trying to pass today. I thought you were saying that it kind of is too specific. So I'm just trying to...
Well, only if you were wished in the future to add additional funding to this. If it was, if it was a grant from either the state or the federal government, it would likely have different requirements than this, the grant you're getting from this particular source. So this would have, in order to receive those funds, this would have to be amended to comply with the requirements of that source.
No, I understand your concern. That's why I'm asking you to point out in the bill.
It's not necessarily in the bill itself, but it was just a reaction to your comment.
So I'm confused, so I thought we were saying that this was so broad, right?
Yeah, well, that's a separate issue.
Yeah, fine, but like for revenue sources, future appropriations from this federal, state, local government, I'm just not seeing the level of detail that you're mentioning to tie it down.
Okay, I think I can say it more succinctly.
Got it.
So most funds that we create by charter are very, they're not fleshed out as much as this one is with respect to the requirements for the money that is going into the fund. They just say there is such and such fund, and it'll be funded by this such and such, you know, resources of revenue. And then it will be spent in accordance with the powers of whatever board is overseeing the fund, or whatever city agency is overseeing the fund. And it usually doesn't give specific requirements, like the uses of the fund can only be, you know, A, B, and C, like as in, like we have here, because that's the requirement of the state law.
So where do you see those requirements at, is what I'm asking.
In the wording that we just discussed regarding the purposes for use of the fund that comes straight out of the state, the state law. And that's found in the bill at, let's see, page two, lines, in the section, starting with line one through line seven, that would be requested the amendment to. But even with the amendment, it is still very specific to this particular source of funds. Generally, our charter funds are not that specific.
Again, I'm not seeing the level of specificity that you're speaking to when you say that second point.
Well, okay, so I'll say it one more time. Hopefully, I'll figure out a way to say it in a way that everybody can follow. The state law requires that we spend these monies in a certain way. And the authorization in page two, section one through seven, states the uses, states the general principle behind the use that the money will be used for.
So community-based, you're saying the specifics in that is "community-based initiatives intended to benefit low-income communities disproportionately harmed by government, drug, prohibition, and enforcement policies."
Well, and also the next section where it says, "The funds established under section shall be comprised of dispersments from the state comptroller's office." I mean, it's a close call. I see what you're saying. But I just feel like it is more specific than, and...
Well, if you can help us broaden it, I'm totally, I'll be very supportive and look at it as a...
Okay, I'll give you some language.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee?
Good afternoon.
Yeah, trying not to confuse the situation, but you know, where we have state, you know, where the bill has stated under revenue sources, line 12, "Future appropriations from the state, from the federal, state, or local government." When I think about this, I think about other similar funds that we have that have restrictions where we're trying to leverage, you know, other state grants, or maybe city capital funds, or maybe city general funds. That program, that service in the operating budget or that project in the capital budget will be comprised of multiple funding sources instead of transferring funds, you know, across different funds within the city's budget. So if you think about how like the casino funds function, some, a project that's funded by casino funds, let's say it's a $1 million project, maybe $500,000 is coming from casino funds, and $500,000 is coming from geo, like geo-borrowing. The, we're not going to transfer geo-borrowing into the casino fund. We're going to bring those to the funding sources from both of those projects together in the project in order to deliver the project. So I think what I'm saying is, we probably would not be in a situation where we would transfer dollars from other parts of the budget into this. We'd look at, we'd look at how whatever we're funding would be comprised of multiple funding sources. Is that helpful?
No, totally agree.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Dana Peterson Moore, Director of the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. Mr. President, Madam Chair, and members of the committee, the Office of Equity and Civil Rights has reviewed this bill and does not support its passage. To be clear, our office wholly supports the purpose of the state's Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund, which is to provide financial support to community-based organizations that serve communities identified by the Maryland Office of the Attorney General as having been most impacted by the disproportionate enforcement of marijuana prohibition. What we do not support is the mechanism this bill seeks to utilize to create the Community Reinvestment, Reinvestment and Reparations Fund. The basic function of the city charter is to provide for the operation of the city of Baltimore. The charter accomplishes this by distributing power amongst the various agencies of the city government, as well as between city government and the voters of Baltimore City. Together with various provisions of Maryland state law, the city charter guides the perpetual existence of the city of Baltimore, due to its function and stature as a supreme governing document of the city of Baltimore. Perpetuity, which is important here because we're talking about a perpetual fund, perpetuity is understood to be the most basic tenet of any viable government enterprise. That is, if it wishes to remain a viable domicile for its residents and constituents, it must continuously provide basic services and functions. This is evidenced by Article 7 of the city charter, which calls for the perpetual existence of some of the most crucial city agencies, fire, public works, health, transportation, recreation and parks, housing, and community development, and other city agencies, boards, and commissions that are crucial to the perpetual existence of city of Baltimore. In short, the city charter serves two main purposes. First, to ensure the perpetual existence of the city of Baltimore. And second, to establish a framework for the city's operations that are under the control of its government enterprise. The bill that we're here to talk about today seeks to add the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Fund to the city charter. However, it should be noted that the city of Baltimore has no control over the flow of state dollars into this fund. The viability of this fund is dependent on the state Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund, which is not intended to exist in perpetuity. So we're going to be creating a fund in perpetuity, or it's proposed to create a fund that will exist in perpetuity, the funding source for which does not exist in perpetuity. That is an inconsistency that has to be reconciled and is not reconciled by the language of the bill. Per the enabling state legislation, the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund is only to be funded for fiscal years 2024 through 2033. Therefore, without an extension by the Maryland General Assembly, the fund will cease to exist in 10 years. The funding source will cease to stop in 10 years. This poses a significant challenge as it will leave the city charter with an unfunded mandate, which is the antithesis of the perpetual nature and purpose of the terms of the city charter. And I understand that there's hope and anticipation and expectation and desire that other funds will come into this, will become available to the city, but we don't know that. We don't know that that will happen. That is ambitious, but not reality yet. Additionally, if the goal is to create the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Fund before the state distributes funds to Baltimore City from the CRRF, a charter amendment may not be the most efficient approach to achieve this objective. There is a risk that the proposed charter amendment may not be approved by the voters of Baltimore City, which could leave the city unprepared to receive funds from the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. This could result in a chaotic situation where there is uncertainty about where to deposit the funds, which would not be beneficial for anyone. Considering the substantial amount of money that may flow and is likely to flow into the city through this fund, it may not be suitable to subject this decision to vote. The city of Baltimore received six, and this is important, because this is what we know now, is what we're doing now, and what the city has demonstrated it is able to do very, very well. The city of Baltimore received $641 million from the American Rescue Plan Act through the state and local fiscal recovery fund to address the adverse impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. As of March 30, 2023, the city has committed $563,333,95 and spent $90,97,228 of that amount, and surely it's more by now. Despite the absence of a specific fund in the city charter to manage those federal funds, the city has successfully managed and allocated the funds in accordance with the explicit uses and prohibited uses outlined by the federal government. We have demonstrated fiscal responsibility and facility and ability in this regard. Similarly, the state Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund should be treated no differently as it also has clear guidelines regarding its allocation. The city has demonstrated its ability to adhere to such guidelines and ensure that funds are used for their intended purpose. We do this very well. One immediately available alternative to the creation of a new fund, and you guys have heard me talk about this, the council has heard me talk about this before. One immediately available alternative to the creation of a new fund, fund is the Equity Assistance Fund. The state's Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund and the city's Equity Assistance Fund share a common purpose, and that is making the city's equity fund, making the equity fund a suitable fund for holding the allocated funds meant to address the negative impacts resulting from the prohibition of marijuana and Baltimore marijuana use. By aligning these two funds, the city can effectively utilize these dollars that will flow into the city through the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund to rectify the damages caused by the prohibition and promote equity within the community. This approach ensures that the allocated monies are efficiently utilized and maximizes the potential for positive outcomes in redressing the harms associated with the marijuana ban. Rather than establishing new funds unnecessarily and codifying it in the city charter, it is more prudent to utilize existing unfunded funds. Doing so reflects responsible fiscal stewardship. We acknowledge and very much appreciate the purpose of the legislation, which seeks to ensure that funds earmarked for restoring underprivileged communities are utilized solely for their intended purpose and not misused or mixed with other funds. Nevertheless, we should not proceed with a lack of confidence in our city's capacity to manage state funds effectively. Along with promoting equity and civil rights, we must also promote responsible governance. And therefore, we do not believe that this bill is the most efficient approach. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Any comments or questions from the committee? I do want to recognize Councilman Glover, member of the committee of the 14th District. Any comments? Moving on, we're going to now take public testimony. If you are online and would like to testify on this bill, please use the raise hand button to let us know. And we do have, I do see one raised hand. Yes, you're on. State your name and your testimony.
I, good afternoon, members. City Council President and President of the Committee, my name is Agatha Sout, and I am a constituent and a Baltimore City resident and voter. Can you all hear me? Just before I go?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Great. So I'll just proceed with my testimony. I support the establishment of a continuing non-lapsing Community Reinvestment and Reparations Fund, especially to support the work of the Community Reinvestment Fund. I also support the position that was brought by many, many groups, including leaders of the Beautiful Struggle, that focus on, that the focus of the fund should be to benefit the communities most deeply impacted by the so-called war on drugs. And I will focus my remarks on the following three points. First, I'd like to urge this council to consider how this fund's impact, and the commission whose work will be supported by the fund will be measured, while balancing this with the process to ensure that smaller groups engaging in the work supported by the fund are set up to succeed. From my experience in community development and organizing in Baltimore, as well as advocating for greater equity in federal policies, I draw the observation that, quote, "What gets measured gets done." In my understanding and experience, the private sector responds to obligations that are clearly spelled out, and when the impact of those measures is documented and reported to the public. For example, the Community Reinvestment Act is a federal statute that requires financial institutions in Baltimore City and across the country to meet the needs of the local communities. However, it's one thing for banks to say what they will do, and quite another to show their work and how it actually benefited local communities. So when I think of reinvestment, I think of mortgages for families and communities that have long been neglected by banks or investments in housing that's not just affordable for the wealthiest in the community, but affordable to everyone living in that neighborhood. Similarly, this funds that are being, this fund that is being discussed today, the impacts must be measured to ensure equity and to uncover how the use of the funds actually lead to reinvestment and reparations for Baltimoreans and communities. We know that BIPOC communities, especially African-Americans in Baltimore, have disproportionately been impacted by the war on drugs since the 1970s and marijuana enforcement for as long as cannabis, cannabis has been available. However, the decades of poor federal policy and destructive enforcement efforts have affected more than just individuals. It's affected families, entire communities, businesses, and compromised the health of cities like Baltimore. So I suggest that the commission should be required to measure the projects and activities that are, you know, by set standards of equity, document outcomes, and report them to ensure accountability. At the same time, the commission should consider how it can support smaller-scale, community-based initiatives, engaging reparations projects, so they can meet any reporting requirements. Next, in line with the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, I am concerned about the sustainability of projects and activities supported by this fund. Considering the city of Baltimore has no control over the flow of state monies into this fund, and the viability is dependent on the state, the state law which created the Community Reinvestment, Reinvestment and Repair Fund, you know, it's not intended to exist in perpetuity, perpetuity, excuse me. The city council should consider how this might affect the viability of projects and organizations funded in Baltimore City through this fund. Community-based organizations in the city come in all different shapes and sizes. Whereas some organizations will be ready and capable to take on new funding, to take on the reinvestment and reparations work, others that are smaller, with less capacity, might need more time in capacity, excuse me, capacity building to, support to ramp up. As such, I recommend the fund specify that it will provide capacity building grants or other support to community-based organizations or initiatives, especially those that are led by BIPOC people, to ensure that their activities and operations are sustainable. While some organizations have managed to patch together various grant funding and maybe even public funding, many of us who have worked in the private sector understand that funder priorities change over time. For example, I'm an OSI fellow from the 2014 cohort, and learned that the Open Society Foundation recently decided to end its support for the OSI Baltimore Fellowship Program. Finally, I'd like to unnote my agreement with several recommendations published by the Baltimore City Health Department, which specifically would strengthen the fund's impact. So first, to strengthen parameters around which community-based organizations can be funded, specify that Baltimore City's share of funding must go towards funding community-based organizations, that in addition to meeting the requirements under state law, have a physical presence in the affected communities. The commission's mission should also include learning and community engagement activities. For example, the commission should work closely with organizations that have a long track record of grassroots mobilization and collaboration. For example, and including, but not limited to, leaders of Beautiful Struggle and CASA, whose models are shaped and developed by members of BIPOC communities that have long faced underinvestment and will seek to benefit most from their projects and activities related to reparations in this fund. Other notable organizations include the Black Arts District led by Lady Breon, and Parity led by Bree Jones, who seeks to revive homeownership and wealth building for Baltimoreans. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your detailed testimony. I do want to make a matter of record that we have no signed in or in-person testimony, and the president would like to make a comment.
Ms. Sout, thank you so much for your civic engagement and testimony today. Couldn't agree with you more. The, the one thing I would say is, this bill is a charter amendment. Will go into the city's constitution, and some of the levels of details about return on investment, key performance of indicators, goals, and objectives, that's ultimately will be the job of the commission, and could also be the job of this legislative body to come back with, with other legislation to put that in. But we wouldn't put those types of things in the city charter. But definitely hear you and real supportive of, of everything you said. Another thing, kind of coupled with that point is, that's why it's really important to get folks who are culturally competent in the space of reinvestment, community reinvestment and reparations, who actually do that work, who study that work, who understand and know that work, for them to help develop the guardrails and the structure for not only this program, but also these funds and this new commission. And, and that's why the establishment of the commission was so important, and now we're coming to establish this lockbox fund that they will ultimately be responsible for. Regarding the perpetuity, how it does go through 2033, I just don't want to forget that, as we've had several times to talk about today and in the past, that this is not set up solely for the, the, the fund, the, the reinvestment reparations fund that was established at the state level, that this commission, as well as this fund, is, will be established to take on any federal, state, or local reinvestment or reparations funding that's tied into kind of the makeup of the authorization of this particular fund.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other comments from committee members at this point? We're going, so that was online, and I don't see any other hands raised online. So let's now take callers. And if you're going to talk, unmute yourself. Do we have any callers? And seeing none, do committee members have any comments or questions before we, I think it's best if we do a recess, since we, there are some amendments that we definitely want to go over and think that they are important to add, and we will call a voting session with those amendments at another time. At this point, one last time, any other comments or questions from the committee? We are now in recess. Thank you all for attending.